And remain standing for the first reading.
Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father God, we come before you tonight, and God, I'm very thankful for these members and for everyone that is present here. God, we know that your heart is for the city of Popper Bluff and that your desire is for it to flourish. God, we're reminded of the words in Proverbs where it says that man makes his plans, but the Lord establishes the steps. And we know at the end of the day, ultimately, it is all about you. So God, I pray for wisdom. I pray for clarity for these members. I pray that they would tell the truth and the whole truth, and at the end of the day, that your Son, Jesus Christ, will be glorified. We pray this all in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Let us allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Crocker.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Mayor Protim McVeigh.
Here.
Mayor DeGarris.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. I have a possible conflict on item G and H on workshop and G.G. and H.H. on the voting No others. We move on to citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Mr. Groves?
Good evening, Mr. DeGarris and the city council and the city manager. I'm here on behalf of our bridge, but before I go on that subject, I would like to make a statement. Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, city council, do you think you all require or should be shown respect? I do too. I definitely do. Do you think me, as a citizen of Popper Bluff, ought to be shown the same respect? Okay. Okay, I'm Chester Groves. I live at 175 Market Lane. Four months ago, myself and Dennis Haas came before the city council asking help with our bridge. At this time, the bridge is worse than it was, a lot worse than it was. All the city council members seemed eager to help. I was told by all the council members they would try and help. I asked if they would keep us informed on the progress or no progress. Every council member I talked to said they would. At this time, four months later, I have yet to receive one phone call. Anything I have found out, I've had to call and try to find out on my own. And all I ever get is, "Well, we're working on it." But still, no call. Then I ask again, after I talk to people about no progress whatever, I ask again, "Please call and keep us informed." Still no phone call. I was raised that you were only as good as your word. If you don't live up to that word, you're nobody. I asked, "Are you only good at your word at election time? We need our vote?" On the 19th of January, myself and Mr. Haas went to MoDOT and talked with Mr. Dave Wyman. He seemed like a really nice man. We told him our problem, and he said he could see where MoDOT might have possibly been at fault causing their culverts to wash out our bridge. And he would do what he could and called us back on Wednesday, the 24th, and let us know. Well, guess what? No phone call. Mr. Dave Wyman wasn't the man I thought he was. My sister-in-law, Karen Haas, called him this morning to get an answer, and all he could say was, "There's no help." I stand before you and wonder why we pay taxes. At this time, if we have a fire, the fire trucks can't cross the bridge and get to us. If somebody has a heart attack, the ambulances can't cross the bridge and get to us. We're not asking for a new bridge. Put in a couple culverts. Put rickrack around and keep them washing out. Give us some help. So again, why do we pay taxes if we can't be served by the city that we pay taxes to? It's funny that the people that live around me and our neighborhood are in the county. So they don't pay city taxes, but yet the city of Popper Bluff furnishes them sewer and electricity, and they don't pay taxes for this. The city helps them, but I can't even get a phone call from anyone. Why? Can't get a response.
I'll address this. I did talk to somebody from the state. It wasn't Mr. Wyman. Kind of got the same answer you did, "No help." I did have Smith and Company, our engineers, go out and look at it. They actually got me an estimate a few weeks ago. If a private contractor goes in and puts a covert and concrete around it and rip-rap, it runs about $40,000. I also talked to the county commissioners about it since this is... This bridge serves people in the city limits, which is you, but the bridge itself is on private property, and the bridge is not in the city limits, which creates a little problem for us. What I had proposed to the commissioners that we could pay for the covert out of our stormwater fund if they would do the work. It's been several weeks since I talked to the presiding commissioner about that and haven't gotten an answer back from him yet, but we'll get one. Other than that, if the council desires that we go in on private property, we'll have to have permission from the landowner to do that. We can't just go in and do it ourselves without that permission. But if the county, you know, if they decide not to help us, we can do it. It's just gonna... Our street department has to, because we don't have $40,000 in the budget to pay a private contractor.
Well, I can guarantee you that you'll get permission to go on that private property.
Okay.
Also, you had to get permission and easement to go on that private property to serve non-residents of Popper Bluff with electric and the sewer. Now, you can do that, them, why can't you do that for us?
I'm not saying we can. I just, you know, I just don't know if the council... I'm assuming they do want to get this fixed, so if they do and the county won't help, then we'll get it done.
I'm not here to madmouth anybody.
Oh, I know you're not.
You know, I'm just at loss. You know, like I said, if somebody has a heart attack or has a fire, you know, we're just out of luck. What's the insurance company gonna do? You know, are they gonna pay off? I don't know. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Haas?
My subject is on the bridge also. I live out by Mr. Groves there. And I've got some recent pictures of the bridge here that's gonna fall down any time. But it's bigger pictures, and I'm gonna let Susan pass it around. But as Mr. Groves was saying, you couldn't get a fire truck up through there at all. One of our trucks was gonna fall, matter of fact, so... But just to say ditto on everything Mr. Groves just said, you know, we haven't got no phone calls from nobody, so we don't know what's going on. So... But if I can pass these around, you know...
Mr. Haas, do you not remember me giving you a call and said that they were gonna come out, and you said that S.H. Smith? I followed up with you a couple times.
Yes.
I don't have control over the situation, but I have called you back.
Right, yes. Susan did call me back a number of times, and I did see...
Been out there multiple times, too.
Right, yes. And I did see the S.H. Smith truck out there looking at it, so I do appreciate that.
And I apologize to Gene. I did not give him a call, but I did give you a call.
Right, we was going through each other and everything. But I do appreciate you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May move on to workshop item A. A representative from the Rogers Theatre Incorporated will appear before the city council to request support to allow a CDBG grant to be passed through the city.
Felicity Ray, Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission, 3019 Fair Street in Popper Bluff. I'm here tonight, sitting with the Rogers Theatre Incorporated, and the nonprofit agency, it's my understanding, wishes to appeal to the city to see if they may once again be willing to sponsor a community development block grant for initial phase of restoration of the Rogers Theatre building. As you may recall, last year, we submitted to the regular community development block grant competition, and that application, we were recently informed, the city was recently informed, of a denial. So it's my recommendation that if the city wishes to proceed with seeing the theater potentially restored in the future, that we move forward and submit again. It's not uncommon to have a year-one application denied, and if you don't keep trying, well, it won't be awarded eventually, so... What the nonprofit agency needs is a sponsorship from the city or the county, a local government entity, in order to make application. Actually, it's the city that would be making the application on behalf of the theater, the nonprofit agency. The planning commission wouldn't have a whole lot more work to do. The application was written last year, which has to be updated and submitted again this year, and we're willing to do that if that's what the city would like for us to do.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we sponsor the grant, the application.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in second to move this to the voting session to be held February 20th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item B, the city council review amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 150, entitled "Cemeteries," Section 150.020, entitled Cemetery Grave Prices, to amend the fees for grave spaces. I'm asking that.
Yes, after talking to several of the funeral homes in town and the way our costs keep going up when operating the cemetery, I've been told that most cemetery lots in the area sell for around $400. Ours have been $200 for many, many years. I'm suggesting that we raise it not to $400, but to $300 this time and possibly look at it a few more years. That would increase our revenues by about anywhere from $8,000 to $10,000 a year.
Make motion to pass to the voting session.
Second.
Motion in second to pass this to the voting session to be held February 20th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the city council review amendments to the 2018 budget.
Yes, we budgeted for the purchase of three patrol cars in this year's budget. In December of 2017, we had one of our patrol vehicles, a 2016 Explorer. Unfortunately, it wasn't one of the older ones, but it was totaled in a vehicle accident. We received $24,311 from the insurance company. Police department's short about $7,000 to purchase one new vehicle, so they've rearranged their budget, although spend about $7,000 less on equipment to make up for that cost. So I'm just asking that we adjust the budget to reflect that. And also on the airport budget, talked to Mr. Gary Pride, who is our interim airport manager. He's agreed to be the... A part-time airport manager for the remainder of this year. He's done a great job out there, took care of several problems that we've had. But also, on the other side, he would like to hire one more part-time person to fill in. We have two part-time people out there. It's hard for them to take any vacation time or sick leave, and actually, in a few years, both of them will be retiring, so we need to get somebody in there to train. So this budget would reflect putting Gary in at part-time for the rest of the year and hiring another part-time person, which actually reduces the budget by about $10,000 because we save on health insurance costs and the law group's pension fund.
Can we put these two together, or do they need to be separate?
They're both in the same.
Same?
Okay.
Motion for approval.
Motion to move this to the voting session to be held February 20th.
So...
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council review of proposed ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a deed and an acceptance of conveyance with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to finalize the city's acceptance of a portion of Herschel Best Boulevard to the city of Popper Bluff.
Yes, this is the Boulevard there by Fazoli's that goes off the highway down into Three Rivers. We found out last summer that we've actually been maintaining that road for years and years, but it's actually part of MoDOT right-of-way. So this is for us to accept that portion of Herschel Best Boulevard.
Motion to pass to the voting session.
Second.
Motion in second to pass this to the voting session on February 20th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the city council review of resignation from the park board and select an appointment for the applicants received for the remainder of the term.
Yes, we had a park board member who's actually moving out of the area to take another job. That person has resigned, and so it leaves an opening on the park board. You should have something in your packets for somebody that's applied.
We just had the one application.
I think that's right.
Entertained a motion in second to move this to the voting session to be held tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the city council review of recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding the annual net metering disclosure. Mr. Bach?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Annually, utilities are required to do a net metering disclosure, and with that, we have three customers that can self-generate. We have 27 KW hooked up to our electrical system, and they have returned 36 kilowatt-hours of energy back to the city. Once you all would approve that, then we have to post that on our website. So we did the same thing last year. I think last year, we had one customer, so now we got three. Any questions?
Are they all solar panels?
They're all solar.
That's an interesting thing. He lives next door to me.
Yep.
So this include the new self-security office, or...
Yes.
Okay.
That's one.
I know they put up solar panels on the roof, so...
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion in second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Workshop item G, the city council will discuss a proposed ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Popper Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBEW Local 702, for its members who are employees of the city of Popper Bluff Electric Department. Mr. Bach?
Yes, Madam Mayor, or Madam Protim Mayor. Well, that's a mouthful. Sorry. So we have finished our negotiations with the IBEW on the electric and water sewer. This first one's on the electric. I believe in your packet, you were given the actual agreement, and you also should've got like a two-page identification of the items that were proposed to be changed. I'll quickly go through those and discuss. Under what, Article 8, there was some language in there on the phone. I believe it was a party line. We said that you're required to have a telephone and be toll-free from the city of Popper Bluff. That was a recommended change. And the line department, we had the apprentice show successfully pass the IBEW test at the Sykeston Hall. We changed that to just pass the IBEW Local 702 test out of the hall. Under working time, currently, we have 10-hour days in the summer and eight-hour days in the winter. I've been a big proponent of trying to get rid of 10-hour days. We came to an agreement through negotiation that anyone hired after January 1st of 2018, they will be hired in as five-eights. We also gave the grandfathered employees the option of working five-eights if they want to. So from a management point of view, I'm trying to move away from the 10-hour days. I'll skip that one for a second. Cleaned up some wording that we had under employees' benefits. Utilities has always paid 100% of the vision and dental. We included that in there. That's, I believe, citywide, that is also covered. On wages, we proposed a three-year agreement from 2018 going through December 31st to 2020, year one a 4%, year two a 4%, and year three a 4%. In comparison, I'll give you some history. I know it was brought out in the paper. I did a quick check. Our 15-year average of our rate increases have been 2.6%. Our 10-year average has been 2.3%. If you compare that to the wages that are around us that, you know, we send a... We get a lineman in, we send him to school, we get him trained, we get him nationally certified. You top out in 2017 at $32.43. Ozark border is at $36.73, which is $4.30 higher. M&amp;A, right here in Popper Bluff, $36.96, $4.53 higher. Ammeron, Missouri, starts in Dexter, $40.68, $8.25. Since I've done, started with negotiation, I've actually had four employees that are no longer with us. One went to Black River Co-op in Frederictown. Two are actually in Puerto Rico working, and one has went to Ammeron. This was brought up at the advisory board meeting today and would recommend the... They would recommend to the council approval of the agreement. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the council? I entertain a motion to move item G to the voting session to be held on February 20th.
So moved.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's tonight. I apologize. We're moving it to the voting session tonight. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, the city council will discuss proposed ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Popper Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBEW Local 702, for its members who are employees of the city of Popper Bluff Water and Sewer Department. Mr. Bach?
Yes, Madam Protim Mayor. Got it out that time. These are the same items that were discussed in electric. I'll briefly go through them. The phone requirement, toll-free call, working time, anyone hired after January 1st of 2018 would be brought in as five-eights. We did agree, we have water plant operators that are certified through the state. We would pay for the training classes to help them get their license the first time. If they don't pass, it's up to them to pay for their own licensing. Both our wastewater operators and our drinking water operators, we require to have a A license. Again, on employee benefits, vision and dental were added, something that we have been paying in the previous agreements. The duration of the agreement is through 2018 through December 31st of 2020, and a three-year agreement, year one, 4%, year two, 4%, and year three, 4%. Any questions?
It's my understanding the contract ended on December 31st.
That's correct.
And we normally don't workshop and vote something in the same night, but this would allow the employees to see the raise sooner. They've already gone basically six weeks without that raise. Is that correct?
That's correct. That'd be February 4th. We are always a week behind on pay, so we did it on the first weekday of not pay, which would be Sunday.
Okay. I'd just like to explain why we workshop and voting it to get the raises to them sooner.
Right.
With that, I would entertain a motion to move item H to the voting session to be held tonight.
She moved.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to action required items, Bill Number 8044. The city council will take action on an ordinance amending the purchasing policy of the city of Popper Bluff.
Motion for first reading?
Second.
Motion in second for first reading, Bill Number 8044. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance amending the Popper Bluff policies regarding purchases for goods and services for the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading, Bill Number 8044, in caption only.
Second.
Motion in second for second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance amending the Popper Bluff policies regarding purchases for goods and services for the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption, Bill Number 8044.
Second. Motion in second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protim McVeigh?
Yes.
Mayor DeGarris?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill Number 8044 is passed. Item BB, Bill Number 8045, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a lease contract with Paul Ringel for flood buyout property at 505 Hog Street. Had a request from Mr. Ringel that we tabled this and bring it up at the next meeting.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion to...
Motion to table.
I'll second.
Motion in second to table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item BB is tabled. Item, Bill Number 8046, the city council will take action on an ordinance adopting the 2017 National Electric Code with the exception of Annex H relative to administration.
Go ahead.
Move for first reading, Bill Number 8046, by caption only.
Second.
Motion in second for the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, adopting the 2017 National Electric Code with the exception of Annex H relative to administration.
Move for second reading, Bill Number 8046, by caption only. Second.
Motion in second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, adopting the 2017 National Electric Code with the exception of Annex H relative to administration.
Move for adoption, Bill Number 8046. Second.
Motion in second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Protim McVeigh?
Yes.
Mayor DeGarris?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill Number 8046 is passed. Bill Number 8047, the city council will take action on an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances for the city of Popper Bluff, Section 420.440, relative to specifications for historical markers.
Move for first reading. Second.
Motion in second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance amending the Popper Bluff Code of Ordinances, Section 420.430 and 420.440, relating to specifications for historical markers by repealing and replacing said sections.
Move for second reading, Bill Number 8044.
Move for second reading of bill number 8047 by caption only.
Second.
Motion and second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance amending the Poplar Bluff Code of ordinances, sections 420.430 and 420.440, relating to specifications for historical markers by repealing and replacing said sections.
Motion for adoption of 8047.
Second.
Motion and second to adopt. Any comments, questions? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McFay?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 8047 is passed. Bill number 8048, the city council will take action on an ordinance rezoning property from RS1 Residential Duplex to C1 Neighborhood Commercial to make an existing non-conforming business conforming, and to add parking at 807, 815, and 819 through 825 Maud Street.
Move for first reading of bill number 8048 by caption only.
Second.
Motion and second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance rezoning property located at 807, 815, 819, and 821 through 825 Maud Street in the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Move for second reading of bill number 8048 by caption only.
Second.
Motion and second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance rezoning property located at 807, 815, 819, and 821 through 825 Maud Street in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McFay?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 8048 is passed. Bill number 8049, the city council will take action on an ordinance rezoning property from RS1 Residential Duplex to C1 Neighborhood Commercial to allow parking and green space for an existing business adjoining this property for the south 95 feet of 721, 725, and 729 North Main Streets running on Maud Street.
Move for first reading of bill number 8049 by caption only.
Second.
Motion and second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance rezoning a portion of property located at 721, 725, and 729 Main Street in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Move for second reading of bill number 8049 by caption only.
Second.
Motion and second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance rezoning a portion of property located at 721, 725, and 729 Main Street in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and second to adopt, bill number 8049. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McFay?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 8049 is passed.
You getting tired yet?
Item GG, bill number 8050, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBEW, Local 702, for its members who are employees of the city of Poplar Bluff Electric Department.
Move for first reading of bill number 8050 by caption only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I think I missed it. Okay. Do you have a motion for second reading? No, I'm in the wrong section, I apologize. Are there any, I've lost my place completely.
He hasn't read.
Okay, yes, read. There we go. Change in chairs, I got all messed up, I apologize.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 702, for its employees and the city of Poplar Bluff Electric Department.
Okay, now, move for second reading of bill number 8050 by caption only.
And second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 702, for its employees and the city of Poplar Bluff Electric Department.
Motion for adoption.
First and second. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem McFay?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Item 80, bill number 8050 has been adopted. Item HH, bill number 8051, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBEW, Local 702, for its members who are employees of the city of Poplar Bluff Water and Sewer Department.
Motion for first reading?
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 702, for its employees and the Poplar Bluff Water Sewer Department.
Motion for second reading?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 702, for its employees and the Poplar Bluff Water Sewer Department.
Motion for adoption of 8051.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem McFay?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Bill number 8051 has been adopted. And I apologize, I'm rusty at this job.
You did good.
We got her done, didn't we?
Yes, that's my thing.
On to resolution number 1870, the city council will take action on resolution making an appointment to the park board.
Move for first reading of resolution 1870 by caption only.
Second.
Motion and second for the reading of resolution 1870, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
A resolution of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, making an appointment to the Poplar Bluff Parks and Recreation Department Board of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption of resolution 1870.
Second.
Motion and second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.